Calling the Finance Committee, we need order. And we're going to begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 6 Finance Committee meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rash, seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Mr. Skoraki, what do we got up tonight?
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well. Just want to check, is Ms. Wesley online, just to make sure for the record?
Thank you for that.
I believe she was going to participate virtually this evening. Ms. Wesley, can you hear us?
I hear, yeah, I hear Bob, I think, talking. Okay, okay. She'll be on. So Mrs. Wesley plans to be joining us virtually. We'll let you know when she's on.
Okay. So we have four items tonight, items recommended for work session or action meeting. And regrettably, this is our first meeting absent Kristin Johnson. So I'm running the entire show here tonight, so please bear with me. I've got presentations here, I got board docs here, I got, okay. So I miss Kristin already. It's only, it's only been two days. All right, so the first item we have tonight is on real estate tax payments. There was a recent law passed, it's now Act 57. It's to address a situation where a homeowner purchases a new home right around the time the tax bills come out. It could be right before the tax bills are issued or right after the tax bills. We have this on a number of occasions where the previous property owner of record receives a tax bill and the new owner never receives a tax bill. And then months go by, months go by, and then sometime in November, December, it catches up and they get a delinquent notice with the 5% penalty, and they're like, wait a minute, I never got the original bill. Well, previously, the way the law is written now is failure to receive the bill is not any excuse for non-payment and it doesn't relieve you of any penalties or anything like that. This apparently has become an issue and had really received some attention the past couple of years. Got the year of the governor and we now have Act 57. And Act 57 allows those individuals that recently purchased a property within the past year, if they complete an application and an affidavit attesting the fact that they didn't receive the bill and they provide documentation, they're a new owner, they will not have to incur the penalty. So every taxing body in the Commonwealth is required to pass a resolution. The resolution needs to be passed by January. In consultation with Mr. Summers, we do have a draft copy of the resolution attached in board docs. We don't feel a need to wait till January, so we're asking for this to move at the October 20 action meeting. This won't take effect, however, until the 2023 tax bills are issued, July 1 of 2023. But it's nice that individuals won't be penalized by not receiving their tax bill. And it really only applies to those property owners that recently purchased a parcel. We have other individuals that didn't recently purchase a property that we hear from time to time, hey, I never received my tax bill. That will not apply to them. It's only individuals that recently purchased a property. So we think it's a good thing for those individuals because in all likelihood, they probably didn't receive a copy of that tax bill. It probably got sent to the prior owner.
Isn't that part of escrow? When you buy a house?
For some individuals, for some, but if you're a new owner, it's probably the electronic files get sent to the mortgage companies and probably still has the previous owner listed.
When they say a reasonable amount of time after you've purchased the home, what does that mean? A month?
So they have, they have, actually have a year.
They have a whole year?
They do.
Okay.
They do. So if it's in delinquency at that point in time, once the, the application is processed and so forth, the tax collector has to accept the payment at the flat amount. No discount available, it's at the flat amounts, but no penalty would be available. Now, because that one-year window, it's a pretty long window, the property may have already been turned over to tax claim for delinquent collection. At that point in time, again, there, you have to take the payment at the flat amount and all penalties would be waived at that point.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, can I have a motion to move the Act 57 resolution to our action meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Ramich, seconded by Mrs. Stoll. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, just want to make sure Ms. Wesley was not present for the vote, correct?
She's, she's trying to log on, but I don't think she's there yet.
All right. Very good. So the next item we have is a discussion about the 2122 preliminary audit numbers. And tied in with that will be a discussion regarding our fund balance and capital reserve transfer. Okay, so I'm going to switch gears to a presentation to give you some insight into our audit. Our audit is underway right now. This is our local independent audit. It's scheduled to be complete in about two weeks. We will have the auditors present at the November, sorry to believe November, but November Finance Committee meeting to do a formal presentation, but we do have preliminary numbers tonight to share with you. And this is important because we are asking for board action regarding the fund balance and capital reserve because once that action is taken, those changes with fund balance and capital reserve transfer can be reflected in the audit report, in the financial statements through June 30, 2022. We don't have to wait a year for them to show up in the financial statements. They can be reflected right away. Okay, so just a quick summary of where our unaudited numbers are right now.
Mr. Skoraki, can I interrupt you real quick?
Absolutely.
So I, Mr. Gilmer, if you can hear me in, in the van, I just tried to log into this meeting virtually and it says the host has another meeting running, so perhaps finance or policy is still running in the background. But Ms. Wesley is getting the same issue when she tries to log in.
He said he's going to try.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gilmer.
Okay. Okay, so at the beginning of the 2122 fiscal year, the budget that was approved had a $5.8 million deficit. So I'm pleased to report that during the course of the year, through positive revenue and expenditure variances, we actually had a favorable variance between the two of $14.1 million. So we brought in 1.4 million in additional revenue that was budgeted and we spent 12.6 million less than what was budgeted during the year. So the net effect of that is a $14.1 million positive variance, which means that we had a deficit budget and you have a positive variance. We're left with $8.3 million that could flow to the fund balance. So 8.3 million is the figure to focus on, 8.3 million that's available. That could flow to the fund balance, that could be transferred to the capital reserve fund, or it could be a combination of the two. Okay, so 8.3 is the net effect.
We spent $12 million less than we projected to spend last year. Was there a major expense that drove that?
Thank you for the segue to the next, to the next slide. So let's talk about some of those variances. First, we're going to talk about revenues. We had, again, roughly about $1.2 million net overall in the revenues. So to break them down into various categories, our earned income tax, we collected $1.2 million more in earned income tax than was projected. That's a $6.7 million variance. Earned income tax continued to be strong during the year. I reported on that quite a bit during finance meetings during the year. So it was really robust wage growth here in the school district during the past year. There was really no indication of any economic downturn whatsoever. The real estate transfer tax was an all-time record. We collected $5.8 million. That's a $2.2 million positive variance. And that's reflective of low interest rates and a number of large properties selling during the course of the year. So the sales transactions were incredible during the year. And again, that's something I reported on monthly because we haven't seen this level of real estate activity ever. So that was a 62% positive variance in the realty transfer tax. And that has continued, even though interest rates are rising, July, August, and September, realty transfer tax has been amazingly high once again. Delinquent real estate taxes, we had a $962,000 positive variance. We brought in more money than budgeted. So the collections of those outstanding taxes were good during the year. Our basic and special ed subsidy, $792,000 positive variance. On the negative side, we brought in $400,000 less in our transportation subsidy and our social security and PISER subsidy was almost $800,000 less than projected. And that's because of unspent salaries. So let's move on to the expenditure side of the equation now. Again, overall was $14 million less than was budgeted. So the primary source of that is in salaries, a $2.8 million positive variance in salaries. And that's primarily due to the number of resignations that occurred during the year. I think there were close to 50 resignations during the year. So you have a higher salary going out, you have a lower salary coming in. Plus, we had a number of leaves during the year. When a person's out on leave, you typically bring in a substitute at a lower salary. So that ended up $2.8 million. And that is higher than what we typically expect during the year. But that then resulted in a number of other things less than budgeted. Our social security expense, which is FICA, our retirement expense, and our benefit expense followed the lower salaries. So when you add up everything related to personnel, the variance was over $5 million right there, actually almost $6 million just in the personnel items. We didn't spend all of our budgetary reserve that we had budgeted. That left almost $500,000 on the table. The same with our supplies and our professional services, we're almost $1 million under budget. So again, our, our goal each year is to try to be around 1% variance overall. So we were much higher than that the past two years. And there's no question, as pandemic-related, spending has been down across the board in all areas over the past two years. Our variance on revenues is pretty much where we like it, you know, around a million, $2 million. That's right in that sweet spot. Expenditures were a little bit high, but I guess that's a good thing when you're spending less money than what's, what's budgeted. So that, again, leads us into a discussion and an issue with what to do with that surplus of $14 million.
Mr. Skoraki?
Yes.
Are you seeing the same kind of retirements out of the staff this year that you saw last year?
Not to the level that we saw last year, not yet. But compared to pre-COVID, we are seeing more resignations and retirements at this stage of the year. Typically, they occur at the end of the year, but typically don't see as many like from the period of the end of July through the summer, through the first couple of months of the school year.
Yeah, I would think that was strange.
Yeah, higher, higher than normal, but less than last year.
Thank you.
Before we get into the transfer conversation, I am kind of curious, and I think it's probably more for Dr. Kim, but perhaps Dr. Bowers, Dr. Waters, you could answer this. 50 resignations, you know that about retirement, you were talking about, well...
Resignations slash retirements, yes.
So I'm guessing part of that number was, that was higher, was resignations. Are we doing exit interviews for all employees that leave? And if so, what do we do with those interviews once they've been taken? What is the process for learning and informing what we're doing from them?
I actually had this conversation with Dr. Kim recently. Maybe we could have an update at one of our meetings. But she does send an exit survey to every single employee who separates from the district, whether it's a retirement or resignation. And then she shares with the operations team. We have conversations. She will do interviews with those who want them. Often, if it's a retirement, people are like, you know, it's, my time's up, thank you, it was a wonderful experience. And sometimes disgruntled employees don't want to speak, but in general, it's just a survey.
I'm just wondering if like it makes sense for administration to be looking for trends that were, you know, coming up and having larger administrative conversations about what we can do to be more responsive? Because that's, you know, I'm glad to see that we save money, but at the expense of staff, you know, I would sooner keep the staff, to be perfectly honest. So I think that's something we need to drill down on a little harder and figure out what we can do in-house to make sure that is not a new trend for us.
Yeah.
And along with that number, I'd like to see how many of those come back and become substitute teachers after they retire. Because if they come back and are voluntary substitute teachers, that means they didn't have a bad experience with the school system. They probably did it for financial reasons or, or a combination of things.
Yeah, I would, I would think that the, the majority of the focus of that would be not so much on the retirees, you know?
Right, right.
As the, the folks that were unanticipated, you know?
I do think year to year, the, the largest percentage or highest turnover rate would be in special ed assistance. And I had a conversation actually with Dr. Kim. That's what sparked the whole review of the surveys themselves, taking a look, because we still have special ed assistant positions that are not filled. So she and I sat down and looked at them together for exactly what you're saying, trends. But at large, we could certainly put something together and perhaps review with the Personnel Committee.
Okay, so I want to focus on this $8.3 million figure again. So again, how that was dry, we had a minus $5.8 million budget and we had $14 million, plus $14 million in a positive variance. And the net of those two is 8.3. So again, if nothing was done, 8.3 million would just flow to the fund balance. That's just how it would work. Now, our recommendation is a combination of things. This is typically the time of the year when we have unspent money that we consider a transfer to the capital reserve fund. So again, the capital reserve fund is separate from the general fund. Transferring that money to the capital reserve fund shows as an expenditure in the general, in the general fund. And once it's over into the capital reserve fund, it can never be brought back. And there's really only two purposes for the capital reserve fund. One is for the purchase of school buses and the second is for capital improvement. So think of renovation projects, think of new construction, think of replacement of boilers and chillers and things like that. It's really to improve the infrastructure of the facilities. So those are the only two reasons money can be spent out of the capital reserve fund. So right now, we have approximately $2 million in the capital reserve fund that's unallocated for any project. Okay, now we know we have a 10-year capital project plan and we have, you know, millions and millions of dollars that are on that list, on that long-term plan. We have $2 million in the capital reserve fund right now. So we feel like we should add some money to the capital reserve fund to allow us to complete projects over like a one to two-year period. So what our recommendation is, is to transfer 2 million out of that 8 million to the capital reserve fund. So that leaves roughly $6.3 million. So that $6.3 million would go to fund balance. But let's talk about the different types of fund balance. On the screen now are, is, I should say, the breakdown of our fund balance through our last audit, through June 30, 2021. I just want to spend a couple of minutes to talk about these categories of fund balance because there'll be a second recommendation regarding the fund balance. So the first item is non-spendable fund balance, $977,000. There's really not much you can do with that. That is inventory on hand and those are prepaid expenses, meaning that the bill is due in a subsequent fiscal year, but we paid it ahead of time. So that really is not part of the equation in fund balance, but technically it's classified as a non-spendable fund balance. The second piece is the assignment for self-insurance fund. We have $2.7 million in fund balance that's assigned. So what does an assignment mean? It's basically a board resolution saying that we plan at some point where we may use $2.7 million for our self-insured healthcare fund at some point. There's no commitment, it could be undone by a board resolution, it could be moved to one of these other categories. But this was set up, I think, about seven years ago, the $2.7 million. So we're not recommending any changes with the $2.7 million because if we have a couple of bad years in our self-insured healthcare expenses, we may want to move that money to our healthcare fund. Okay, the next item is commitment to PISERS. Now, this item is $16.8 million and this has been on the books for 10 years or more. And it was set up during a time when the employer's share of pension, the employer's share of PISERS was dramatically increasing. And we had some years where the pension cost increased by over $10 million. So, and the percentage increase was, you know, 10, 15, 20% increase. Well, we're still seeing increases with pension, but those increases have leveled off. So quite frankly, we don't feel a need to have any money committed for PISERS at this point in time. And in fact, over the last 10 years, only about $100,000 out of that nearly $17 million was ever used for PISERS. Okay, only about $100,000. So even in the face of those massive increases, we never really tapped into that PISERS commitment. So we don't feel a need to have money on the books committed to PISERS. So what is our recommendation? Our recommendation is twofold. Number one, change that commitment from PISERS to capital projects. Okay, not transfer it to the capital reserve fund, but change that commitment to capital projects because we, we know we have a number of significant capital projects, new construction, renovation on the horizon. And we feel that commitment is more appropriate. Doesn't mean it'll be used in total or in part for those projects, but again, we just think the designation is more appropriate. So what does it take to change that commitment of $16.8 million from committed to PISERS to committed to capital projects? A board resolution. And that's what we're recommending for October 20. The second piece of that is, so we said we have some additional money from the current fiscal year that we would also like to consider. We had $8.3 million in total, remember. $2.0 million, $2 million are recommending to go to capital reserve. The remaining $6.3 million, we're recommending that that be included in the commitment to capital projects. So why a commitment in the general fund as opposed to the transfer to the capital reserve fund? I think first and foremost is, again, once the money is in capital reserve, it can never come back. But having that commitment for capital projects, you can still spend that money on capital projects, but you don't have to. It gives more flexibility, I think, if you have that commitment in the general fund as opposed to just saying, okay, we're going to take the entire $8.3 million and move it over into the capital reserve. But another reason is, we discussed this quite a bit regarding our bond rating, okay? So what looks good to Moody's? What is the number one factor that determines a bond rating? The amount of money in fund balance. So that's why, another reason why we're not recommending that $8.3 million surplus be transferred to the capital reserve fund because more weight is placed in the fund balance. So this would actually increase our fund balance. It would take our fund balance from $42.2 million and we would add another $6.3 million to that. So it would take us up around $48 million in total, roughly 17% of our total expenditures. And that's a pretty good level. That's a pretty good level.
That's what you continue to describe as that sweet spot.
It is.
Moody's is looking for in terms of our savings to our...
Now, if our goal is to get to a AAA rating, 17%, perhaps might not be quite enough, but it's certainly getting us into the conversation of a AAA rating. The last piece of fund balance I want to mention is what's called unassigned. That is not allocated for any particular purpose. There is a law, as part of Act 1, that your unassigned fund balance, based on the size of our budget, cannot exceed 8% of the following year expenditures. So right now, we're at about 7.5%. So we are under that level. So we're not recommending anything changed with the unassigned to keep that at $21.7 million. So we're recommending, again, changing the commitment from PISERS to capital projects and then adding another $6.3 million over to that commitment from our surplus. I also want to mention that these are unaudited numbers, so yes, it's 6.3 million today. It could be 6.4 tomorrow or 6.1 tomorrow. So when we have the final numbers, you know, we'll be able to be more precise for that and we should know, you know, better between now and next Thursday, quite frankly, what that number will be. And then if there's any changes after next Thursday, then perhaps we just let that flow into the unassigned portion at that point in time because it really should not be anything material at that point. So if you concur with our recommendation, there would be two resolutions, two separate resolutions on the October 20 agenda. Number one, transferring $2 million to the capital reserve fund. And secondly, a new commitment, instead of it being PISERS, it'd be for capital projects. And it'd be $16.8 million plus another $6.3 million.
Let's start with the motion. Can I have a motion to move these two resolutions to our action meeting?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Casa, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Are there any other questions?
Can we, I, oh, go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, but if I, if my, it's pending my internet's unstable, so if it is, I'll stop. Mr. Skoraki, so if we pass the resolution about committing that $16.8 million to capital, we could then actually look and to do more, more work from the capital, the 10-year capital project planning bracket?
That's correct.
But if we do that and the fund balance, you know, we transfer it to the capital projects and then the fund balance goes down, does that then have a negative effect possibly on us in, you know, getting a higher bond rating?
Yes, I, I think if there is like a multi-year draw of the fund balance, that will be viewed very negatively.
So how do we draw it down and use it without impacting, you know, our bond rating? Because when I, when you said that, I candidly was quite happy when I think about what is all the work for our, you know, 10-year plan, but at the same time, if there's negative ramifications, I mean, I guess you would have to guide us through what makes sense in terms of spending and balancing our bond ratings. Is that fair statement?
Exactly, exactly. And it goes back to what Mr. Fusco mentioned earlier about the sweet spot. You know, we're at about 17% fund balance all in right now. So we have to walk a fine line with respect to the, to the bond rating and the borrowing cost because I think once you dip below like around 14%, maybe 15% fund balance, you know, we could be at risk of a bond rating downgrade. You know, forget about the upgrade, it could be a downgrade. So there is a fine line there to walk. So I would definitely guide you through that. But I, I think it's in the best interest right now to, to have the money in the general fund as opposed to the capital reserve fund. But knowing though, to your point exactly, knowing that in the future, you know, depending on the needs and the priorities of the capital plan, that, that commitment for capital projects could be used towards that 10-year plan.
All right, that's great news, thank you.
Is, can I, yeah. Is that all something that the financial advisors would factor in to their plan that they are going to present to us if we go try to do the ninth grade project in the high school? Like all of this would be part of that planning process?
It would be. This is all part of a large equation, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Skoraki, real quick, and this is, educate me a little bit. What, what initiates a reevaluation of your bond rating? So I know we can initiate it and be reevaluated, but is there a circumstance where a lender would have our bond rating reviewed?
So the, the typical situation when you have a review is when you're ready to borrow money or refinance existing debt. So that's automatic. It will definitely happen at that point in time because you need that rating to be able to sell the bonds. The purchasers of the bonds want to know what your credit status is, what your credit worthiness is. So that's the ideal time. But also in addition to that, Moody's on a regular basis, not annual all the time, but they will do just a routine rating review. Or if there's a material change in the district's finances, that may also prompt another rating review. And those ones that are initiated by Moody's, we don't pay for those. We do pay for the rating, though, when we are set to borrow or refinance. So there is an expense with that rating review by Moody's. I think it's roughly $12,000.
Mr. Skoraki, thank you so much for all of your work in preparing budgets, preparing plans. And yes, we know that this is step one of a larger vision and a larger plan for our entire district. So thank you for that. I think when people tend to, we tend to hear news of your vision and this plan in smaller headlines, right? So the headline on this could be that North Penn is flush, right? We have money that we're moving around. And I wonder if you could speak a little bit about that? And I think sometimes people will hear this and say, well, why, why do we have this money? And why aren't we investing it right now? And why are we doing all these things? So I'm wondering if you could comment a little bit to that?
Certainly. So anytime you have a surplus at the end of the year, I think, you know, a question is, well, why do you have a surplus? So we, we identified some of the reasons for that surplus this year. And I'd certainly want to be sitting here in front of you tonight saying we have a surplus as opposed to a deficit. You know, we try to be very conservative with our budget. We try to be in a situation where we get to within that 1% variance. That's our, our annual goal. I think we've had a couple anomalies now the past couple of years because we were right around that target in the previous years. So again, it comes down to, I, I think, a balancing act because you have to be careful. This is taxpayer money. When we talk about $42 million in fund balance, that's taxpayer money that we're talking about. But we try to take a long-term view with fiscal sustainability. We want to be very careful not to continuously draw down that fund balance because if that were the situation, we could end up in financial ruin down the road. That's why we're always looking at five- and 10-year financial projections to try to have that, that, that sweet spot where we don't have too much of the taxpayers' money on reserve, but we don't have too little of money on reserve. Because having too little has a number of ripple effects that ultimately could cost the taxpayers more money in the long run anyway. So that is that fine line, that sweet spot that we're trying to walk right now. And I, I think we're there. I, I think a 17% fund balance is very reasonable. We have a $300 million budget and now with the recommendations that we're talking about tonight... talking about tonight, we'll have forty-eight million dollars in fund balance. Let's call it fifty million dollars in fund balance, just for rounding purposes. So it, it's really only a couple months' worth of expenditures when you think about it that way, that if all revenue ceased to exist, stopped coming in, we didn't receive any money from the state, our revenues here locally dried up, we only have a couple months of operate, uh, operating money on hand to cover our expenses. And before you think that that can't happen, there was a, a time, I think it was about seven years ago, maybe eight years ago, where we received no state subsidy for eight months because the state budget was eight months overdue and we weren't receiving any state subsidy. So, you know, the notion of, oh, you, you always receive your money, that's not necessarily the case. So having a reserve like this also helps to bridge gaps like that. That period of time, that late state budget adoption, there were school districts, even here in Montgomery County, that had to go out and borrow money just to pay their bills because they didn't receive their state subsidy.
And then probably had to pay the debt service on that.
They did, they paid interest.
So they incurred cost on that, yeah.
Exactly, exactly. And that's what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to take a long-term fiscal sustainability approach. We're trying not to hoard too much taxpayer money, but we're also trying to set us up for a good situation where we can be considered the highest credit rating that's possible. We're only one notch below it. We're already an elite company. We're already recognized statewide with our budget practices and with our credit rating. So I think it would be difficult to argue that we're doing something wrong when it seems like we're being recognized by outside agencies for doing things right. And we just want to continue along that path, that we don't set ourselves up where we have some sort of fiscal cliff that we need to deal with in the future.
And I do think it's important to also recognize, too, that we do have major projects that need to be taken, undertaken, right? And so having the ten-year project plan plus then also, you know, the, the need to begin to really plan and very quickly move forward with the renovation of, of the high school with the ninth grade center, those are, are all things that we need to factor in. And so thank you so much for that explanation and helping us. I think it's so hard, sometimes we tune in, you know, maybe one board meeting to, you know, one, another board meeting, but just really seeing that this is part of a larger, a larger plan and, and part of a larger vision. So thank you.
Thank you.
I was wondering if there's, if context matters when Moody's is looking at our bond rating? So fears of inflation, economic conditions, interest rate hikes, anything like that, does that play into their calculation at all?
Demographics does in the community. Wage growth matters. Inflation, not so much. Tax base matters, that's very important if we have a growing tax base. You know, we've had a couple of large tax assessment appeals, one in particular with the Montgomery Mall that didn't go our way. So Moody's looks at things like that as well. So that, those are economic indicators, though, growth of the tax base, growth of wages, realty transfer tax, they absolutely look at those. Less so the inflation piece of it. But they're also looking at a number of intangible factors such as like environmental situations, like environmental risk in the school district. That's something new that they're looking at as well. They also pay particular attention to charter school enrollment. And they've always been quite impressed here at North Penn School District that while we do spend a couple million dollars in charter schools, the number of students we have attending charter schools relative to our peers in Pennsylvania is quite low. And I think that's a testament to the educational services that are provided here in North Penn School District, that we have roughly two hundred twenty students attending charter schools out of, you know, thirteen thousand potential students. So I think that's quite remarkable. There's districts that are a fraction of our size that have two and three times the number of students attending charter schools. They actually view charter school enrollment as a risk to school districts, but they always comment that they're impressed with our low enrollment numbers.
Can you elaborate on the comment you made about the environmental risk?
I, I can, and I'm actually going to deliver a presentation on this at the next finance meeting because I just received a report from them two days ago, I think it was, no, yesterday, Monday, yesterday, where they have a new report where they talk about environmental conditions, environmental factors and so forth. So I need to dive into that report a little bit more to give you more information on that, but they, they sent along like an eight-page report unsolicited, like where they gathered this information, I, I really need to find out because they did not interview me for this information. But in looking at the number of metrics, there were things like environmental risks, hazards, insurance risks, things like that.
Interesting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Skraki, I too thank you for your financial acumen and appreciate these suggestions that you've come up with to help us to maintain financial sustainability in our district. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
And for what you do and to keep us on the track. And I'm a taxpayer, so as a taxpayer, I wanted to let you know that I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. It's probably a good time to mention, too, that, you know, we are the fifth lowest tax school district in Montgomery County. We are about twenty percent below the countywide average. So I think it's difficult, no one, no one likes taxes, believe me. I don't like paying my real estate tax bill, no one does. But it's a system that we have right now here in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So I think it's difficult for anyone to say that, to make an argument that, oh, North Penn is just completely overtaxing individuals because we are the fifth lowest. And we are blessed to have a nice tax base here in the school district, that certainly helps. But when we talk about return on investment and sweet spot, you know, to have the student achievement level that we have, to be the fifth lowest tax school district in, in Montgomery County, to be twenty percent below the countywide average, I think we have some good things going financially for our community, for our taxpayers and for our students.
I've, I've always wondered, why don't we have the capital reserve fund budgeted? Why do we come out at the end of the year and look at a surplus and deficits and figure out if we have money for a capital reserve fund? Because it seems to me these projects need to be done no, no matter what. So it seems like a fixed cost to me, even though they're variable from year to year, you could, you could take that variability out of it by putting it in the budget itself.
So, Mr. Rush, a couple of years ago, I think it was three years ago, maybe four years ago, for the first time, we actually do include a transfer when we're adopting our budget, transfer from the general fund to the capital reserve fund. Now, that number is varied because we had some debt that has fallen off and then we just increased the amount of the capital reserve transfer. This, this fiscal year that we're in now, for example, the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, we transferred four point four million dollars from the general fund to the capital reserve fund. That transfer was already made. And that money was used, to a large degree, to fund the remainder of the NAP project. So NAP project was roughly twenty-seven million dollars. We only borrowed twenty million dollars for that project. The rest of the money for NAP came from money that was transferred from the general fund to the capital reserve fund, not at the end of the year, but as part of the budget process. So years ago, there was only one transfer that was ever made to the capital reserve fund, and that was during the audit process this time of the year. But three, four years ago, we changed that process when we were developing that long-term capital plan to make that commitment as part of the general fund budget process to include money to transfer over to the capital reserve fund so we could start addressing those, not kind of happenstance at the end of the year, but to strategically plan to fund those projects as part of the general fund budget.
Wonderful. Thank you. I didn't, I never heard about the early transfer of money or I don't, it doesn't equate to me, but that's how it should be done, I believe. Thank you.
So I'm just wondering, do you need our guidance in terms of how to make this recommendation or how to accept the recommendation you're putting forward for the meeting or just to move the item itself to the meeting for further discussion? What do you?
So let me, let me restate the recommendation, the two separate parts to this action. I think it can be on one vote because it's simply moving it forward to the action meeting, but it would be two separate resolutions on the ten-twenty action meeting. So again, the first recommendation is transfer of two million dollars from the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, transfer from the general fund to the capital reserve fund. So that's resolution number one. And the second resolution is kind of like a combination resolution. It's removing the commitment to piecers of sixteen point eight million dollars, but then adding another six point three million dollars in commitment to that. So that will be part of the same resolution, kind of two components to one resolution.
Understood. Okay, so we'll vote on it separately at action. Can I have a motion to move these two resolutions to action?
Second.
Second. All right, motion by Mrs. Stoll, seconded by Mr. McBain.
Mr. Fusco, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think before we started this discussion, we did have a motion already by Mr. Casa, seconded by Mrs. Ramich.
Oh, well, in that case.
So I think we're set for a vote, actually.
Okay. In that case, nobody has any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Just want to confirm, too, Ms. Wesley, you voted in the affirmative, correct?
Yes, I did, Mr. Skraki.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that discussion. Next item recommended for action meeting is our municipal financial advisor recommendation. We recently conducted an RFP, Request for Proposals for a Municipal Financial Advisor. This was called for as part of our professional services policy that was adopted several years ago, and that was basically to put some of our larger professional services on a cycle that we would do an RFP just automatically. So items that are up for this cyclical RFP would be things like architectural services, banking services, auditing services, financial advisor, legal services. So it was time to do the financial advisor. In fact, last year was the time to do it, but we had no bond issue that was pending last year, so we kind of postponed it to this year because we know that there's a possibility of moving forward with a, a significant project at the high school and there's a potential that we could be borrowing money sometime in twenty twenty-three. So we conducted the RFP a few months ago. We did have seven proposals received by firms, which we were quite pleased that we received seven proposals back. For the first round, we invited all seven firms to participate in a presentation slash interview. From that first interview, we recommended that four firms be invited back for a second presentation slash interview. And we did have a number of board members, members from central administration, from the business office that participated in those rounds. And then we narrowed it down to two firms, and we had a third round interview with two firms. And again, we had board members, members from our operations team that participated in that interview process. And our recommendation based on those interviews is to continue with our existing financial advisor, and that's PFM. They've been servicing the school district for over ten years. We're quite pleased with their services. They are the number one municipal financial advisor in the Commonwealth. They're the number one municipal financial advisor in the United States. We are pleased with their service. We think they do a pretty good job, and they've also done some preliminary work for us as we are, you know, contemplating projects moving forward. We felt that a transition would be pretty seamless by continuing with PFM. Their pricing is very, very competitive. In fact, it was on the low end of all the proposals that were received, and that would be the recommendation. And I'd be happy if any of our board members that participated in the interviews, if you would like to make any comments, I know, Mr. Rush, Mr. Fusco, Mrs. Stoll, you were involved in one or two of those interviews, so if anything you'd like to add to that recommendation, I'd appreciate it.
I believe since I came on the board, they've done three refinancing for us and saved us over six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Yes. I would just say that, yeah, we have a, a long history with them. They've saved taxpayers in this district a lot of money. They've been a fairly integral part of the planning for, that we've been doing for some time now relative to the ninth grade center, high school, looking at expenses for investing in our middle schools. And having sat in the interviews and, and heard the presentations, I think that they were, there's a reason why they dominate this market in this state, that we are in good hands to continue with, with their services, PFM.
So I, I just want to thank you, Mr. Skraki, and your team, and Dr. Bauer and Dr. Waters for sitting in on those meetings. I know it was, um, there was two candidates that we really were considering, and it was very close, and it took a lot of extra time on your part to make sure that we picked the right firm. So I want to thank you for your extra efforts in making sure that we're picking the right company. And I am comfortable in the decision and the recommendation that we are making tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. So we're recommending then an engagement letter to be approved by the board at the October twentieth action meeting.
Can I have a motion to move this RFP to action?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Stoll, seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Wesley, I believe I heard you say aye, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Final item for action meeting is something that's really exciting. We received yet another propane bus initiative grant. This is our third one that we've received. So we've actually received over eight hundred fourteen thousand dollars in grants now for our propane bus initiative, which is quite remarkable. And then we have a couple grants that are pending, so we'd like to push that over the million-dollar limit here in the near future. But this most recent grant is just shy of two hundred thousand dollars. This is through the Driving PA Forward Program. We have received money through this program before. This is actually part of the Volkswagen emissions controversy settlement that was reached a couple of years ago. Each state received money from that settlement, and we're the benefactors of that. And this is actually for buses that we already purchased, buses we purchased last fiscal year, seven buses. We're receiving a thirty percent match on those seven buses that we purchased. So we do have a million dollars in the budget, again, this year for the purchase of new buses in the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, so we're hoping some of those pending grants can be used for the purchase of new buses. We're also paying particular attention to supply chain issues. The buses have not been ordered yet, we'll have to go out to bid for those, and if we place the order in December, January, will we, will we receive those buses in time prior to the end of the fiscal year? That still remains to be seen. But now, we do have thirty-eight district-owned propane buses, and keep in mind, we also converted the First Student fleet over to propane. First Student provides all of our private school transportation, and they also provide about twenty-five public school runs. So there's fifty-eight buses with First Student as well. So fifty-eight and thirty-eight, we have, you know, over ninety buses, North Penn buses through contractor or through our own that are operating on propane, which, as we all know, is much safer for the environment, environment as opposed to diesel, and it's certainly much cheaper. We're paying about ninety-four cents a gallon for the propane versus diesel, which is upwards of three dollars a gallon through our bid.
Are all those buses yellowbird?
They're not, well, the new ones are. All the propane buses that we purchased are bluebird.
Yeah, that's what I meant, those ones.
And they have the, the green birdie on the side.
But they all, but they, but all of our propane buses.
All of our propane buses are bluebird, correct.
So this has knocked down the average age of our bus fleet pretty substantially, right? Do you know what the average age is now?
I'm, I'm going to give you a ballpark because years ago, before we started this initiative, we were around fourteen-plus years, fourteen and change. I think we're under twelve now, and it might actually be closer to, I don't know, it might be on the low end of the eleven range.
And the ideal range, I believe, you've said before was under ten, right?
We'd like to get it right at ten. That would be ideal. And if we continue with this cycle of purchasing ten new buses a year, I think we'll be able to achieve that goal.
Great. Thank you.
And in part of this grant, too, we do need to take seven buses out of commission, and the seven buses that we're taking out of commission, they range in age from sixteen to eighteen years. So that will also, once they are off our books, that will help notch down our, our average age of the fleet even more.
So if anybody wants to paint one green and they should call you, take it down to tailgated and Eagles game?
Exactly. I believe, Ms. Wesley, had a question?
Sorry, Mr. Fusco, I'm not the best one to center, I apologize. I, I was just curious about the infrastructure for the buses, how that is going in terms of, you know, filling up and the money that we're getting, it is for new buses, but if we wanted to do any improvements in the infrastructure, infrastructure to support the buses, could it be used for that as well?
Not this particular grant. This was specific to purchase of propane buses and taking buses out of commission. So not for this particular grant, perhaps for future ones. I do want to mention that the propane infrastructure, the tank that we have at the high school now, that was funded with a fifty percent match grant through the state, through a different state program. We received a hundred fifty-five thousand dollar grant from the state for that infrastructure. So in terms of the filling of the buses, now that we added fifty-eight propane buses from First Student, there was some backup in the beginning, and we now have First Students on a schedule when they can come, a certain time and certain days of the week where they can come fill up their buses. We did have quite a backlog that first week of school, it was blocking some traffic and so forth, but we've since worked that out.
Okay, thanks for that.
So we're asking for, we typically, for grants of this nature, we typically ask the board to formally accept a grant. Again, the money that we had to put out for the buses was part of last year's budget. We purchased the buses, we have the buses on hand, so we're just asking for this to be placed on the ten-twenty agenda, just for acceptance of this nearly two hundred thousand dollar grant.
Can I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McBain, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any other thoughts?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd also like to note for the community, so it's an estimated four tons of pollutants per year, per bus that's removed. So a quick calculation, that's 152 tons per year just of the North Penn fleet. And with that decision made earlier to take on those additional 58 buses, that's 384 tons a year of pollutants that are removed from the air.
And we will continue to look at electric buses, just to see when it's feasible to move to electric buses over propane buses. I know we look at it every year, and I hope that we continue to do so.
We will continue to monitor that. We're still in a situation where electric buses are about four times the cost of a propane bus. They're over $400,000 one electric bus. Lots of money available through grants for electric buses also, so I think when that price point comes down, comes down significantly, I think we might be, with grant money, we might be in a situation where we really give that consideration.
You've been thinking one or two years, two to three years?
It's newer, that space is newer for buses than it is for passenger vehicles, so it might take two, three, four years before we start seeing those numbers gravitate closer to one another.
So you haven't heard any conversation about the Inflation Reduction Act and the subsidies that come along with green energy pieces of that policy having any impact on this initiative?
So we, through that infrastructure money that was available, the federal money, we actually did apply for more grant money for propane buses, because again, that spread is just too great right now to justify. And also, we don't have the infrastructure for electric buses at this point in time. So I think once we start seeing that spread, you know, again, come closer to one another, I think that would be the ideal time. I think for any kind of reduction, elimination of diesel-powered vehicles, I think you're always going to see grant money out there, either from the state or from the federal government.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was Mrs. Wesley. Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to move on to the informational items now, two quick informational items on the agenda tonight. First is on tax collector audits. We had our auditor, Zelenkovsky Axelrod, also known as Z.A., they do our general fund audit. We had them conduct four tax collector audits this year. Typically, we have them do two a year. This year, we had them do four. The reason for that is we had three elected tax collectors that left office at the end of December 2021, so we wanted those three tax collectors examined, and then we added a fourth one, one that was continuing to collect taxes. So the three where the individuals no longer are collecting were at Hatfield Township, Hatfield Borough, and Upper Gwinnett Township. Those tax collectors decided to retire, and they were replaced with newly elected tax collectors. And then the fourth one was North Wales. So I'm pleased to report, three out of the four had absolutely no issues whatsoever, and our auditors, they did testing of 60 transactions per municipality to make sure that the money tied into what was supposed to be collected, it was collected during the correct time period, the deposit was made timely to the school district, and it was able to be reconciled with the bank account. So three out of the four had no issue. At Hatfield Township, there was one small issue, and that is, and I need to get more information on this, it appears that the tax collector collected a bill that was in the penalty period, but she accepted it at the base amount with no penalty. So the 5% penalty wasn't added, and it appeared that the check date was made sometime on or after November 1st, which is the beginning of the penalty period. So there could be extenuating circumstances, perhaps they wrote a previous check for the wrong amount, and she allowed them to write a new check. I don't know the specifics behind that right now, but I need to find that out. But the money that was collected was deposited in our account, not an issue with that at all. It's just the fact that it appears that she allowed the individual to pay the flat amount even though it was in November during the penalty period. So again, I'm sure there's a good explanation for that. We received the money, but it did not include the 5% penalty, so we're going to find out more information about that. So we do have the four drafts that are available. Typically, we don't have the board approve these agreements because technically, it's not a formal audit. It's actually called agreed-upon procedures, but they are doing testing of 60 transactions per municipality. So I think the key takeaway here is, all the money was collected that was supposed to be collected, it was deposited in the school district's account in a timely manner, and it totally reconciled to the books, and totally reconciled to the tax duplicate as well, and totally reconciled to the amount that was turned over for delinquent tax collection to the Montgomery County Tax Claim Bureau. Any questions about that? So we have our elected tax collectors serve a four-year term, so next year, we will just go back to having Z.A. do an agreed-upon procedures report for two tax collectors. We have nine elected tax collectors, seven in Montgomery County, two in Bucks County. Okay, moving on. Last item for tonight is a quick healthcare center update. I do, I'm very, very happy to report, after, you know, it seems like four or five years when this process started, we are really getting close now to having the onsite healthcare center for our employees here at North Penn School District. Mr. Schneider and I had our first pre-construction meeting last, or two weeks ago, with the contractor that is manufacturing the modular unit, and also with the contractor that is going to be doing the site work. So the site work is going to be starting by the end of this month, October. The modular unit is going to be in production the week of 10/18. So that's next week, right? Next week it starts. Barring some act of God, that should be finished by November 17th. It's being manufactured in Georgia, and then the three-day transport from Georgia to North Penn will occur. So the site work is expected to be complete by the end of November. The unit is expected to be here by the end of November. Then there's ties, tie-in and electrical work and things like that. So we're anticipating at this point, again, barring some unforeseen circumstance, and believe me, we've been on a roller coaster ride with this healthcare center. Just when we think we have everything lined up, then we have, you know, bids that are rejected for the site work, for example. Then we get a state contract, and we're back in play again. So we think the center could be open in January now for our employees. And of course, the sooner the healthcare center opens, the sooner we can march down that path of projected savings of $10 million over a 10-year period. So we are really excited. It's mid-October, and the thought of this opening up in early January now is like incredibly exciting for me, because this is really the end of a, of a five-year journey to bring it to conclusion.
I would like to volunteer your services to drive the truck that says oversized load on its way up here.
I'd be happy to do that. I don't want to drive the oversized truck. I want to drive the lead truck, right? The guy to.
Just let him hog the horn at least, right? Give him that much.
So we're really excited about that. So we'll keep you updated. We'll certainly have updates in the facilities and operations, but I didn't want this update to wait to the FNO committee meeting. I just was so excited and happy to report out that we are really getting close now. Next week, it starts production, so we're psyched about that. Okay, unfortunately, we now, I just want to let you know, we do have two student reps now to the finance committee. We added another rep, Gazepi Shino De Calo. He is the student council president, I believe, at Penfield Middle School. So he's going to be joining our committee in addition to Lauren Yeo. Unfortunately, neither were able to make it this evening. They both committed to being here either virtually or present here at the ESC for the November meeting. And finally, for informational purposes, the financial reports are posted in board docs. There is an executive summary under each item. I alluded to this earlier when we were talking about the preliminary audit results, but earned income tax, realty transfer tax, even into the new fiscal year, is still, you know, very, very strong. So we're starting off the fiscal year on solid grounds. And that concludes my information, my reports. Mr. Fusco, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scrocki, and I do think you're right about five years. I can recall you talking about the healthcare clinic as long as I've been sitting behind this table, so it sounds about right. All right, we're going to move on to public comment. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the committee should be aware that they are being recorded. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the committee during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the committee state their name and municipality. As a reminder, the public comment portion of the meeting is designed for residents and taxpayers of the district to provide comment and feedback on matters being discussed at tonight's meeting, or matters that may come before the finance committee. It is not designed for debate or discussion with members of the committee. When appropriate, committee members may choose to respond to public comments that have been made, or request that a member of the administration follow up with the speakers after the meeting. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to three minutes. All right.
Jason Lanier-Lansdale. As always, Mr. Scrocki gives a really detailed presentation, and I appreciate all the information that's available. Do have some, again, some lingering questions regarding the clinic, mainly the authorization to do that in the school board doc, or not school board, school code. I've looked through this a number of times and can't find anywhere where you're allowed to build something not related to school on school grounds. Example being, you know, I mentioned this, Mr. Scrocki, before, but you couldn't decide to build the gas station because you wanted to save everybody the cost of driving to school. It's not permitted, and it's not an investment either, because there's strict investment procedures for school, for the school to invest in. So I'd really like to get an idea of, under what code you're allowed to build this healthcare Also, wanted to talk a little bit about this 10-year plan in the, in the ninth grade center. Looked in board docs, last time you guys talked about it was in 2020. So it seems to be unclear to me whether or not you're building the center over at the high school, or you're going to revamp all the middle schools. And if you're going to revamp all the middle schools, it seems the priorities might be a little bit, need a little addressing. Meaning, there are things that are higher priority in the 10-year capital improvement plan, which don't seem to bear a lot of concern on bettering the environment for kids to learn. That is, there's a number of paving projects for parking lots ahead of getting air conditioning in the middle schools. That doesn't seem like it makes a lot of sense. And maybe that either the capital project needs to be addressed, or you got to, you got to tell us what the real long-term plan is, whether or not you're going to demolish the middle school, or do whatever with the middle schools, or you're going to, you're going to keep them going, or just the ninth grade, whatever it's going to be, maybe make it a little bit more clear, because right now, it's not. Also, wanted to talk quickly about the Act One Index versus all the money that, that, you know, as Ms. mentioned, that we're flush with cash, right? So we were talking about the 20%, I think, Mr. Scrocki said, we're in the lower 20% of tax rates in Montgomery County, but yet one of the largest school districts in Montgomery County. It would make sense that we have less taxes. Is the plan then to go and act, go full out on Act One Index and raise the tax rate to another 4.1% this year? Because it sounds like the drive is to get as much money in the coffers as possible to do as many of these projects, which aren't clear what the priority for doing them is. And one of that, there's a benefit to anybody who's in the school to learn, not to the administration, and not to the employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier. The one point that you brought up about confusion in the community, we haven't, you're correct, we haven't really had much public discourse about the plan for the secondary schools since COVID. COVID sort of derailed the track that we were on. I can assure you, though, that there is all intention on this, part of this board and the administration, once we've finished looking at studies that our architects have done, to bring another presentation forward to the community that sort of outlines what we have found in terms of the needs, we will have a robust discussion about how to move forward with prioritizing those needs. So that's a fair point, like, for what it's worth. You're right, the community probably, as we talk about it, the community hasn't been as well-kept in the loop, but that's going to be changing very shortly.
But the capital improvements plan was reviewed.
The capital improvements, sort of the capital improvements plan is regular.
At the last, at the last.
I would agree.
Facilities and Operations Committee, just this last month.
Right, it's updated every, every facility, I think, right? So, and I think the paving projects are not ranked up higher than, I'm just like flipping through that. So I don't think Mr. Lanier was right about that comment.
Can I jump in, Mr. Fusco?
Yeah, absolutely, Ms. Wesley.
Sure, thank you. So, Mr. Lanier, the 10-year capital project plan is prioritized with, based upon expertise involved in it. And the, again, as President Stoll just commented, those paving projects are not the highest priority. The capital project plan was recently reviewed about, probably, three weeks ago, and I just want to make a comment that that plan is basically a single repository for all the capital projects for the existing buildings. I look at it as a repository for all, for all of our existing assets. At the present time, you wouldn't see, as Mr. Fusco said, any information regarding a ninth grade center. But what you will see on that list are a number of high-priority high school projects that need to get done, simply because that particular building is really old, and a lot of the equipment and the systems are outdated and antiquated, and just not up to present-day operating conditions. So the plan will continue in, in parallel with what Mr. Fusco said that the board is working on, and at some point, when the decision is made, and we're more informed from the architects that are working on this, some of that work will literally come off of our plan and be included in a major project, whether it be a renovation of the high school or another project. But presently, the ninth grade center is not part of it, so any of the funds that are there are not focused on anything at this point. So I hope that helps a bit.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Do you have something to add, Mr. Resch?
I was just going to say that this, this, our 10-year plan is going to take a lot of expertise to get it going. We brought the architectures on board to come up with some ideas. We just hired a financial advisor to tell us how much all this will cost and put together the big picture for us. And Mr. Scrocki and, and the rest of the team are probably, and we did studies a couple years before, before the pandemic came, so there has to be, there has to be, there will be a project plan given to the public once we have some specifics on what we're suggesting that we do. I don't know if you want to add anything, Todd or Steve?
Yeah, great points, Mr. Resch, and I do think Mr. Lanier raised a great point. We did discuss the fact that the first shoe-to-drop on this high school project and the direction of our secondary buildings in particular, and beyond, was the financial advisor. So before we could responsibly share some of the iterations and options as it comes to the renovation of North Penn High School and potential expansion, we need to be able to say, one, can we afford it, and if so, how? So we don't want to throw all these options out there in front of the community without being able to answer those questions. So that moves to action next week, and once we have the financial advisor in place, then we can start to have those come.
And then I also want to just clarify while we have you, Dr. Bauer, that there are two kind of separate issues. One is the 10-year capital plan, which has ongoing projects at every single building that is prioritizing projects based on the impact that it would have on student learning and safety, and there's one other factor. And then there is this larger renovation project with the high school. So two very separate kind of things that we're looking at all at the same time, that we're needing to piece all these things together for.
Yeah, that's correct. So there always seems to be a renovation in the works, right? When you have 18 schools, there's always a building that needs to be addressed, but there are also smaller projects such as roofs and chillers and boilers and, and systems that we have in place. So, yes, there are projects in every building that need to be done over a course of 10 years, but there's also kind of the hopper, if you will, with the next renovation project. And North Penn High School, I've been here for eight years, and North Penn High School's been kicked twice for another building, and it is, as Ms. Wesley pointed out, it is time for North Penn High School. It has not really been touched since 1971, aside for the addition of K-Pod.
Yeah, I, go ahead, Ms. Wesley.
Okay, and Dr. Bauer, I want to add, too, that for a long time, the district, in my viewpoint, just mine, has been in more of an operating mode, which has been fine, but at this point, we're all recognizing. But at this point, we're all recognizing that for 21st century education and for also maintenance of our, you know, responsible maintenance of our existing assets, we are as a district moving into a building mode, a construction mode. So base level is not going to be able to continue. So as you said, the financial advisor, the architects that have all that information are giving us what we need to go out to the community. So we can move into that informed construction design mode. Operations are pretty easy sometimes, just saying.
All right. So I apologize for my inarticulate comments. I was meaning specifically high school ninth grade center when I was commenting on the lack of conversation we've had publicly about what is happening. So. Okay, we are going to adjourn this meeting and then we're going to need about 10.
I have a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Goslin.
I just want to point a clarification from Mr. Skoraki. Do we consider the propane filling station to be a gas station on district property?
A gas station, no.
No, but it's a filling station, right?
A filling station for our propane buses, yes.
I was confused about us building a gas station from that comment, so.
And the health center is a service point for our staff in the same way as the filling center is a source of fuel for our buses. The health center is a service for the district employees.
I always like to say that we are already providing healthcare services for our employees. We spend $27 million a year providing healthcare for our employees and their eligible dependents. We have 4,200 lives covered on our plan between employees and dependents. Having the onsite healthcare center is taking the expensive approach of having individuals go to a primary care provider or urgent care or even emergency at some times. And we're bringing that into a lower cost alternative. So we're still providing healthcare, it's just being delivered at a lower cost to the taxpayers.
Okay, our next finance committee meeting is going to be held November 9th at 6:00 PM and then the following, I'm sorry, this is November 9th, and the following is December 5th at 7:00 PM. We are going to recess and then we'll be back in 10 minutes for our work session.